Good afternoon. We'll call this regular meeting of the New Orleans Planning Commission, New Orleans, Minnesota, to order. It is Thursday, August 30th, 2018, 4:30 PM. First item on the agenda is approve the minutes from the August 2nd special meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, approving the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll move along to a public hearing. A, consider the application of Lonny Carpenter on behalf of New Beginnings Church and Janet Leno on behalf of Leno Family Limited Partnership requesting a conditional use permit to allow the location of a church on property Zone B2 Service Business District. The property is legally described as lots 9 to 13, Block 45, south of Center Street. Street address, 324 20th South Street.
Members of the Planning Commission, notice of the public hearing has been sent to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. Property is located north of 20th South Street and east of South German Street. Total land area is one acre. Site is the current location of a 9,070 square foot vacant building previously occupied by Dollar General. Comprehensive plan designates the property for business land uses. Property to the east, south, and west is designated for business land uses and to the north for industrial land uses. Property to the east, south, and west is zoned, B2, and to the north, I2. And land uses to the north consist of a wooded area and a single-family dwelling. To the east, a convenience store and vacant area. To the south, a veterinary clinic and event center. And to the west, a restaurant and hotel. The purpose of the B2 zoning district is to provide a district for a wide range of services and goods which might be incompatible with the uses permitted in retail business districts. It is intended that the B2 Service Business District be located in separate areas which may be adjacent to other retail business districts or in close proximity to a major street. Permitted uses in the B2 district include a combination of retail, service, office, and light industrial uses. A church is permitted in any zoning district with a conditional use permit. A church is a permitted use in the R1, R2, R3, B1, and B3 zoning districts. In order to recommend approval of the permit, the commission will need to determine that the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. The reverse side of the application lists the seven conditions and the applicant's response to them. An eighth question asks, why should the city approve your request? The applicant's response was to fill a vacant structure in New Orleans before deterioration occurs. The city has approved one other request to place a church in a B2 zoning district. A church must provide one parking space for each six seats based on the design capacity of the main seating area. So that's a requirement in our city code for parking purposes. Attached is a copy of the application, a zoning map showing the location of the property, an aerial photograph of the property, and a ground level photograph of the property. Staff would recommend approval of the request for the following reasons. The request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. Two, the proposed uses of the same general character as some of the permitted uses in the B2 zone. Three, the proposed use would be compatible with surrounding land uses. And four, the city has previously allowed a church in a B2 zoning district with no apparent Conditions, there is one condition, and that is that the applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Next item has to do with potential motions. I've provided you with information on a motion to approve and on a motion to deny the request. That concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter, pro or con? Please step to the mic, state your name and address.
My name is Lonny Carpenter. I live at 122 South Broadway, right here in New Orleans. We've been in town now for going on five and a half years. And we pioneered a church here five and a half year ago. And we've been looking for a place to call our own, to have our services. Right now, we meet at the Event Center, which is in a room about this size, and we're kind of standing up side by side. We have that many people in there at this point. And we, this place came available. We looked at it quite some time ago, but they wanted a lot of money for it at that time, a lot more money than what we were willing to afford because we could build for less than that. But I already went through a building project a couple of times, and I don't want to do it again. So we just, this one came about, and with what the building is, as the square footage and the parking that's there, it's exactly what we need. And we're just hoping that you all approve us to put a church there. We'll have to do some remodeling on the inside. We'll have an architect come and look at it. We've got all this stuff lined up. We're just waiting for the approval. Thank you.
You heard his comment about the parking? Have you got any issues or questions relative to the need for parking and how much parking?
No. No, I have, we, I've counted all the stalls three different times. And we've got ample parking in that place right there.
Yes.
And it's, it'd be a nice addition right down there because we'd fix it up really nice. Not that the outside is in disrepair, it's just, we're just going to fix it up nicer. We'll put that sign to use that's down there. And, you know, it's a church, so we keep it up and dressed in great shape because it's God's house, and we want that to look the way He would have us to have it look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Anyone else? Now would be the time. Seeing none, I would recommend that we close the public hearing and take action accordingly.
Mr. Schonberg, am I correct to say that this will go off, no tax on this property either?
Well, I guess that would be a decision that the church would have to make, but most churches are tax exempt.
I myself, I hate taking a piece of property like this that's on prime retail, turning it into a church. I mean, I love the fact of the church, but it's also been for sale for two years and there's been no action.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if the building's sitting empty, it's going to serve their purpose. Like I said, I hate taking out a tax rule, but if nobody else has come forward, it's going to do them good, I guess.
I would agree with that. We've already got a couple other buildings that have been sitting empty for several years, so. And let it get put to good use and...
I would recommend approval of the motion as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, approving the request as presented with conditions?
Correct.
Correct. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This will go to the City Council next Tuesday.
The loaning agency that is taking care of all this is with the, with our denomination, with our church denomination, and they requested for me to get minutes of this meeting. Is that, is that possible, that I get minutes of this meeting so that they know that it went through?
I believe that's possible, but this is a recommendation board or commission?
That's what I told him too. I says, well, this is...
We can get you minutes of the meeting.
If you can do that.
But we are recommending board to the City Council.
Right.
Any approval or denial will happen after City Council.
Yes, yes. I'm just going with what they said. They're the one holding the checkbook.
Anything referred to...
Yeah, I would think that they would probably want the City Council minutes because those are the ones that are going to state that it's beneficially approved. The other thing that we might be able to provide you with is a resolution that also states that the request has been approved. So I think either of those, I would hope, would be sufficient.
All right. I think that it will. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you. By public hearings, item B, consider the application of Dennis Bianchi requesting a conditional use permit to allow storage buildings on property Zone B2 Service Business District. The property is legally described as lots 10 to 14, Block 89, south of Center Street. Street address, 1601 to 1619 South State Street.
Okay. Again, notice has been provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. I might explain that Mr. Bianchi's request involves the construction of a building for himself, and then he's going to have some property left over. And so he thought it would be appropriate to make this request then for all four lots so that in the future, you know, that additional property could be used for storage buildings, and it wouldn't be necessary to come back for a permit again. The applicant's property is located west of South Broadway and south of 16th South Street. Total land area is .95 acres. The property is vacant and is the location of buried building demolition materials. Comprehensive plan designates the property for business land uses. Property to the northeast and south is designated for business land uses and to the west for low-density residential land uses. Property to the northeast and south is Zone B2 and to the west, R1. Land uses to the north consist of product storage. To the east, business uses. To the south, storage facilities. And to the west, single-family dwellings. The purpose of the B2 zoning district is to provide a district for a wide range of services and goods which might be incompatible with the uses permitted in retail business districts. It is intended that the B2 Service Business District be located in separate areas which may be adjacent to other retail business districts or in close proximity to a major street. Permitted uses in the B2 district include a combination of retail, service, office, and light industrial uses. Again, other business activities of the same general character as those listed as permitted uses are allowed in the B2 zoning district with a conditional use permit. A storage facility is a permitted use in the I1 and I2 zoning districts. In order to recommend approval of the permit, the commission will need to determine, one, that the proposed uses of the same general character as permitted uses in the B2 zone, and, two, that the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. The reverse side of the application lists the seven conditions and the applicant's response to them. An eighth question asks, why should the city approve your request? The applicant's response was as follows, appropriate location for storage building and will be compatible with surrounding land use. Since 2000, the city has approved 10 similar requests to place storage uses in a B2 zoning district. Attached is the application, zoning map showing the location of the property, an aerial photograph, and two ground level photographs taken from either side of the property. Recommendation, the staff would recommend approval of the request for the following reasons. One, the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. Two, the proposed uses of the same general character as some of the permitted uses in the P2 zone. Three, storage buildings would generally be less intense than most B2 land uses. Four, the city has previously allowed storage facilities in B2 zoning districts with no apparent problems. Five, storage facilities are located to the south of the subject property. And six, the city has previously allowed storage facilities adjacent to residential properties. The next item has to do with conditions, and I'd like to maybe go into a little bit of depth about the proposed conditions. I'm thinking that we may want to modify some of them, and I'll identify those. I took these conditions from the requests that had been made by Scott Dreckman for his facility, and so, but I think we may want to make some modifications.
Okay, the first... Have you reviewed all of them that we're seeing now with Mr. Bianchi?
Number one is no exterior storage will be permitted between the storage buildings and 16th South Street and South State Street. First of all, South State Street has not been improved, so it's, it's just right now, it's a grass area. It may be improved at some point in time in the future, so that's why the condition would apply. 16th South Street is going to be an arterial street. We have in our landscape regulations that those areas, we, you know, paid a little bit special attention to. So that's why we would want that condition. Number two, landscaping and screening will be provided on the 16th South Street and South State Street sides of the property. And again, that is, on the South State Street side is to shield the residential properties, and on 16th South, that may not apply directly to Mr. Bianchi's project, but it could apply then to someone in the future. I guess we'll have to wait and see. But again, then if we have the condition there, you know, then it's of record. Number three, no curb cuts are permitted to the property from 16th South Street. Again, this probably will not apply to Mr. Bianchi's project, but this would be for the future. The buildings and site improvements must allow proper site drainage. The next one is that all structures on the site will have the same exterior colors. This is one that I think staff would recommend that we modify. It's likely that this property will be developed, there might be two phases or two parcels, or it could be three parcels possibly. And so what we're looking for here is that the buildings that are on the parcels are of the same color. The next parcel could be a different color. It's that, and in particular, what we're looking for is where we have multiple units, we would like them to be of the same color, like Mr. Dreckman's was, and that's why we had that as a condition. No commercial or business storage uses are permitted. So this is an attempt to kind of reduce the intensity of use. You know, the only access to the property is probably going to be through the alley, at least for a period of time. It's only 20 feet wide. The other issue is that we do have those residential properties that we want to make sure that there aren't any adverse impacts to them. Next item is that the applicant will provide a site plan for the project or projects, and then finally that the applicant will be responsible for the payment of utility and street improvement assessments on South State Street. Again, this is something that may or may not occur. We just want the applicant to be aware of that fact. Now, if the applicant sells any of the property to other users, then this stipulation or condition would, would simply go with the property and would then be of, you know, their obligation. Then staff has provided two motions, one to approve the request and one to deny the request. Okay? That concludes the staff report.
This is a public hearing, so anybody who wish to speak on this matter, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address and...
I'm Dennis Bianchi from Upper Wall High Lane. I got a question on the, on the color of buildings you're talking about. That they all have to be the same color, I guess. I'm not, I'm not sure what, what do you, what do you mean? I mean, you, like, I think, I think the Valley View Electric Building was a kind of a tan building.
Yeah.
So in other words, would all, all the buildings have to be tan color? Is that what you're trying?
No. What I'm suggesting is that for each parcel of property that is developed, that the buildings on that parcel would have the same color. So if there were three buildings on one parcel, they would all be of the same color. If there were four buildings on the next one, that they would all be the same. Or if someone put up a unit type of storage project which is on the other end of the block, that's all of the same color as well. So that, that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
So if you have three different parcels, you could have three different colors.
Mm-hmm. Now, as far as vehicles being parked there and stuff, what, what type, I mean, are you talking about like vehicles that aren't being used, or are you talking about vehicles that are being used that are licensed, like the city has a rule on?
You mean as far as being stored outside?
What I'm getting at is somebody else has approached me about buying part of the property and parking vehicles on there for his business.
Okay. I think what the staff recommendation is, is that there would be no exterior storage on the 16th South and the South State Street sides. So that would allow vehicles to be parked in other locations on the property.
On 16th South, you mean, you mean the first lot right south of the street there?
Yeah.
Okay. So in other, other lots could be, have vehicles parked in?
Right. And then on the South State Street side, even though the street's not there, again, we've got residences on that side of the property.
Oh, you want, no parking on that, on the right away, street right away there, more or less?
Well, and on that side as well. So it would, you'd want to place your buildings so that your storage would be either on the east side of the property or on the north side of the property.
Okay. Yeah, I see what you mean. So you have to stay off of that street, the proposed street?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, so.
Can you help me understand a little bit what you mentioned, that someone has approached you and they want to park vehicles? Are we talking about junk vehicles? Are we talking about repair vehicles? Or help me?
You can't park junk vehicles anyway, so, I mean...
That's why I'm asking.
Well, this guy has a business, he has a business, and he's thinking of, he'd like to buy one. He said he'd like to park some vehicles.
So the business would be an auto repair?
No.
No?
No. It's actually, I think he's, it's electrical business is what it is. And he, it's service vehicles is what he was, was just talked about.
Okay.
And I think they'd be parked there. I don't know if it'd be during daytime, which I think mainly be at night when he's back and off his job.
One of the conditions...
They wouldn't be, right, it wouldn't be right off of the, right off of the street, off of the 16th South Street anyway.
One of the conditions says no commercial or business storage uses, so would this mean the plan would be these five lots would be for personal use rather than business? I mean, that's what one of these is here.
Right. And that is correct, that the way that would read is that this would be for...
Personal.
Personal use.
Then, then, correct me, the former Valley View Electric Building was a business use that's right next door to this?
That's a business use right next door.
So now you're saying no more businesses, or they'd have to come back?
Well, in the, in the Valley View case, I mean, the business was right across the street, so...
Okay.
You know, the activity was kind of split between those two locations, so...
So how do we propose if we're going to get that building developed? If somebody wants to buy that building for a business, are you saying they can't have a business in that building?
Well, if this provision were adopted, then that's what, yeah, the impact would be. You can change that if you want to.
And they could come back and apply for...
Or, well, if you adopt it, they could come back and ask that that condition be changed, or you don't have to adopt it at this time.
All right.
That's, that's up to you.
I guess I'd like to see the, under the conditions, the no commercial or business storage use permitted removed from the conditions.
Oh, Larry, I think he's, you're mostly talking, like, if somebody has a small business they're working out of, and the delivery trucks come in the middle of the night, you want to avoid that, being that we're so close to a residential. Am I correct in that assumption?
That would be one impact that we would want to avoid, yeah.
Because I just heard Denny say, somebody that might have a service-minded business and have service vehicles, that might want to have a storage building, so then would that particular lot have to come back for...
No, I, I think what he said is he would be storing this on his property that he owns. And I assume you're building a storage building for your own use?
I'm building a storage building, but somebody else is talking about storing vehicles, but like I said...
Just using it as a parking lot, basically.
I think what, what he's doing now, he's storing them right by Valley View Electric on the, on the lot there and stuff, and I think he's probably, you know, if they sell that building, he's going to have to get off of there probably. So he's going to need a place to store his vehicles.
Is this the first you've heard of, of the conditions? Is there an urgency? Is there a benefit to maybe work, delaying this and working out the conditions?
Well, I guess, I don't know what kind, what conditions have to be worked out, I guess, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I need to know that you agree with he, what he just said, and there's about seven conditions, and if we recommend approval...
Well, the conditions, I had a question on it, I already asked.
Okay. So you're in agreement with the conditions that were presented?
As far as the vehicle storage and stuff like that, I guess if you wanted to reconsider, you know, or think about that, we got time on that. I haven't, I haven't confirmed to the guy that we, I'd sell it to him for sure.
When, when would you like to start construction on your project?
I'd like to get going this fall yet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. If we say no commercial or business storage uses are permitted, isn't the parking of a commercial truck figured in that? So this person would not be allowed to park his electrical service trucks there, or his service trucks there, if I, if that's left in here, if I understand this correctly? Because a service truck is part of a commercial business.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we do this? If somebody wants to put a vehicle, or wants to buy a lot, and he wants to put vehicles on, then they can come back and get their own approval.
Yeah, they'd have to get a, what would that be, a conditional use permit then? Or what would that be?
Yeah. Well, then we'd have to only apply these conditions or these modified conditions to his, to the property that he wants to develop. And then everybody else, if he sells anything in the future, then they would have to come back and go through the same process. So, you know, this was simply an attempt to allow storage facilities to be located on any of these four lots. If you want to reduce the area that you want to grant this right to, you could do that as well.
The cleanest way would be able to do it through his personal property request and let happen what happens later on.
That's an option.
That'd probably be the cleanest way.
How many lots are you going to be using for your...
Two.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could take the, and you're going to use the two lots that are closest to the existing building?
Well, I was planning on that. It'll be the next three lots, one of, two of those next three lots. It just depends on what the, like I say, what the other person wants to, which lot he would like.
Okay, so we would be looking at the three lots adjacent to the existing building? Okay, so we would be looking at the three lots adjacent to the existing building that's there.
Ten, eleven, twelve?
Yes.
Okay. So that that's a decision that the planning commission can make, that you only want to deal with those three lots. And you can establish whatever conditions you want for those three lots.
I think by putting conditions as far as no commercial or business storage, you know, just brings more paperwork to bring it back to planning commission for the future for hindering sales potentially for Mr. Bianchi to develop it. And then it has to come back for council approval again. There might be somebody that's going to build a storage unit and want to run a small business, you know, and it might be a, you know, maybe their home occupational business and they need a little bit more room and they're going to run it out of a storage shed, and now they have to come in for it.
That's true. But when you open it up to business and commercial uses, you know, have the opportunity for 24-hour-a-day businesses and for adverse impacts to the neighbors in the surrounding area. So there's kind of a pro and a con. Now, if you wanted to, you can limit hours of operation. That's another opportunity that you would have to, you know, restrict, you know, an adverse impact.
Were there any responses from adjacent property owners?
No.
Now, again, to help clarify, if I recall this past spring, if we take the property across 16th South, there were several RV utilities parked there for a couple of months this spring. And that was either just not brought up to anybody, they just stored them there or parked them there. I'm just going to take a wild guess and say it was Joe's campers units that were sold and waiting to be picked up or something.
Yeah, I yeah, there was campers parked on the lot.
So that wouldn't be allowed on the other side of the street? Something like that.
I guess I don't know what location...
Not on the backside of those buildings.
Not on the backside.
Not on the backside. He wants to make it look clean and neat, and this neighborhood to remain remain quiet, which it should be to a certain extent. That's why he's putting these conditions in there. If you ask me, I think the condition is to stay in there, and if anybody wants to make, you know, down the road, come forward and they can apply for themselves if something comes forward. If they had a business or something, he's the one that wants to go in there, they can get their own variance. We can put these conditions right on there and then come back to the council.
Yeah, it probably would come back to the planning commission again and then go to the city council.
Dave, is part of including that particular condition in line with being consistent, as you mentioned, with Dreckmans, for example, in their storage business?
Well, it's consistent with Dreckmans. I don't know if we've I think we've tried to apply that where we had residential properties in close proximity. You know, there are some residential units further to the north on some, again, behind South Broadway, between Broadway and State Street, and we may have applied it there as well.
I guess I like the idea of being consistent in similar situations as well.
I'll admit, I struggle a little bit with having requests for Mr. Bianchi, but there's a lot of maybes for the rest of it. There's no development plans for it right now, if I'm understanding you right.
Right.
It's a lot of maybes. And we agree with the rest of the people here, maybe we're just go with it and let it come back to the planning commission if he sells the lots or he doesn't develop some. But right now, I'm understanding there's no development plans.
No.
So if we're comfortable tying it up with the conditions or whatever, I can go along with that.
I guess I got one more question with regards to staff with the no curb cuts on 16th South. We've got curb cuts across the street. Is there? We've got two of them on the Potters, the former Potters, right across the street, curb cuts on 16th.
That's true. I talked to the city engineer, and he said if we can reduce curb cuts, traffic flow is it's safer and and better.
Okay.
So is that another modification to the conditions?
No, it's in there.
It's in there.
That's up to you. That's...
So, Mr. Bianchi, then, do you understand that if you do start something this fall, then no one would be allowed to park a service truck on that property as as the conditions are now?
No one would be able to park a service truck? Oh, you mean if we if we have another lot specifically?
Well, any lot, if you take the three lots or one lot or two lots, whatever, nobody can park a service vehicle there with these conditions as they are.
So he'd have to come back and get approvals if he wants to park some vehicles there?
If we leave that in there.
Mm-hmm.
And says no outside...
I don't know what's the difference. I mean, he's got them parked now by Valley View Electric there, and they don't seem to be a problem there.
And it also says that no outside storage, so everything has to be inside.
So so vehicles that park at night would have to be outside, I suppose. I don't think he's going to build a...
No, we would allow outside storage. It's just not on two frontages.
On the backside.
The backside and 16th South.
Sure.
I would recommend make a motion to approve the application with the recommendations from the city staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, recommending approval of the of the request with the conditions presented.
Can I just clarify now? Are we dealing with all of the lots, or are we just dealing with three of the lots?
All lots.
All five lots.
So it was as presented, all of the lots?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This will go to the city council next Tuesday. What is it, the fifth or something like that?
Fourth.
Fourth? Next Tuesday, 4:30. Moving on, item C, also a public hearing. Consider the application of Josh Sabatino on behalf of, is that Ittinger LLC, request variances from the side yard lot width and and lot area regulations of city code to allow twin homes to be constructed on the property legally described as lots nine to through 14, block 52, south of Center Street. Street address 1301 to 1323 South Minnesota Street.
All right, so in your packet, there is the we've got the application, preliminary plat of the addition and areas, some area and ground photos. And we will be looking at, actually, the second page on the preliminary plat that's right next after the pictures of this, and it gives you what we're looking for. So this property is zoned R3. So in the R3 district, one or two family dwellings are allowed. So we'll be looking at actually requirements for an R2 district for the setbacks for the side and the front yards. In the R3, it's required, we have side yards of, it says 15 feet for for buildings not exceeding three stories. In the R2, it's five feet for any lot that's less than 65 feet, and any lot greater than 65 feet is 10. So we're looking for a variance for zero zero set foot or zero feet set foot back between the lots of three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, 12, to be able to build a twin home, or, yeah, a twin home. So that would also require a five-foot setback on the side yards on either side of these lots also. Next part of the variance request is the lot area regulations. In the R3, it's a 10,000 square foot lot. R2 is what we're using is an 8,000 square foot lot. We're looking for our lot requirement is 6,000 square feet for a single-family home. We're looking at 4125 square foot. The lots will be 25 feet wide by 165 feet deep. And that's where we also have the lot width and depth regulations would be on the front yard setback. The required lot width is 50 feet, and these lots are getting divided down to 25 feet. And there was a similar request asked for variance for the Milford Heights Second Edition, where they did those row houses. Kind of the same same type of request were requested for those also.
Well, twin home is a common wall, so you don't need to...
Right, but the the row homes still have those, they have the common wall between them also on each side, on two of them on each side.
Okay.
So it was, yeah, same type of request, just more more involved in the common wall area.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing. So anyone wish to speak on the matter, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address and...
Josh Sabatino, representing Ittinger. I live on Clay Circle. And I guess we're just requesting this variance so that we can we can build these twin homes, sell them off, and hopefully help out the need of New Ulm with the the housing shortage and and get some more people in the town with, you know, a little bit, not necessarily lower income, but more affordable starter homes with doing a twin home. So use up a vacant land that's been sitting there for years.
Okay, going by there today, there's an awful lot of activity on that lot right now.
Yep.
So do you have permits and approvals for...
Yep, we already...
Building ahead and building already? Have you got permits from?
Yep, we've already got all the building permits and and the SWIP permits and everything. So I guess if the variances don't go through, then it'll just end up being more rentals in town.
Because right now, he's got a building permit to build a duplex on the first lot. So with with this variance, it will be can be turned into a twin home. The building requirements, building code wise, are pretty much the same, a little more stringent on the on the twin home, which Josh is aware of and the contractor's aware of. So that's how they're they're proceeding, building it as a twin home. But with the with right now, it's listed as a duplex on the building permit.
First of all, I'm not against this, but I got to ask a few more questions.
Sure, no, that's fine.
I'm a little concerned. Did he get a permit from the staff for approval of this without a variance? And now he needs a variance? He's already going on the project before approval?
The the building of a duplex is permitted on this property.
Yeah. And as of right now, the only thing that's been done is soil corrections.
Okay.
I might note that approval of the variances, approval of the plat allows him then to sell each side of the unit.
Individually.
Right now, he's limited, he is a landlord renting, or he can reside there if he wants to, but he can't sell off either of the units, other than the one that he would reside in.
Or I could sell to another landlord.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, reason I'm a little sensitive to that, we just went through another issue where someone already constructed a fence, et cetera, without permit and all that good stuff. So I want to make sure that we're on firm around that.
Yeah, I know, I've been up here talking to these two twice a week for the last few months, making sure that I'm dotting my i's and crossing my t's.
So if there was a hiccup, would that stop your project?
As far as not getting the variance?
Yes.
No, we'd probably just move forward.
Not advocating that, I'm just asking.
We would we would just move forward and keep the one rental, rent that one out. The the intention right now is there's there's six lots, so we're going to build the one. If we get this variance, we'll sell off the two halves, and then we'll just kind of work our way down, eventually totaling five twin homes. And then on the end lot, it would be two Ramblers facing 13th South.
So the activity you got going on there right now is just kind of cleaning it up?
Yeah, they're they're digging out all the all the stuff that was dumped there from from the clay mining and and different things like that, so...
Okay. Other questions for him?
I got a question. So on these twin home lot widths, is that similar to the other ones we've done? The 25 feet? That's similar size?
Yep.
Okay. Just seems so narrow.
Yeah.
But there's a five-foot setback at that on the sides?
Correct, yeah.
So then the houses would be 25, 20 feet wide?
It'll actually be five and a half feet, because the total of the the twin home is 39 feet. So, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Anything else? Do you have anything else for us?
I don't think so.
Okay. If not, I'd recommend closing the public hearing and taking action on the matter.
Thank you.
So is this one variance or two variances?
Well, this would be the variances for...
Lot size and?
Lot size, the side yard for the common wall, and the lot width at the front yard setback line is supposed to be 50 feet. It's 25 with each individual unit.
So could her motion be just as it was requested?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the variance requests needed for this development.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second recommending the approval per request. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. You got to go again to council meeting on Tuesday night.
Yeah, good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, Josh.
Moving on, consider the approval of the preliminary plat for the Ittinger, is it Littinger or Ittinger?
Ittinger, I think.
Ittinger?
Okay. The applicant is Josh Sabatino. Current legal description is lots nine through 14, block 52 South. Street address is 1301 to 1323 South Minnesota Street, zoned R3. Since we just, the previous request is for the same property, I'm going to summarize. What I would note is that the property is zoned R3, but the city code allows R2 land uses in the R3 zoning district as regulated therein. So you can have R3 zone property, and you can put a single-family dwelling on that property, and then it's regulated, you know, as it would be in the R1 zone or the R2 zone. So on the second page of the staff report, we list, you know, the old legal description, the new legal description, zoning standards, minimum requirements, they're all provided by the plat and where the variances are required. So those should match up with the previous action that was was taken. Lot 14 complies with city code requirements for lot width, lot depth, and lot area. Comp plan designates the property for high-density residential land uses. The comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the plotted area. Utilities to serve the property are located in South Minnesota Street, and each side of the twin home will need its own sanitary sewer and water and service. So, you know, that portion of South Minnesota Street is going to have, there's going to be some digging there. Attachments are the preliminary plat, zoning map, aerial photograph, and then three ground level photographs. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the following conditions. Pay the plating fee of $510, base fee of $150, and $30 for each platted lot. Pay the park plat pay the plat parkland dedication fee of $2,040. Now, the fee is $340 times the number of lots, and so that comes out to $4,080. But we would give them a credit for the six existing lots that are already there. The theory behind that is somebody could walk in and say, I want to build a single-family dwelling there, and there would be no... dwelling there," and there would be no charge for that, so that's why, you know, a credit is warranted. Secure approval of the required variances, provide an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2000 or newer format, and then provide a letter to us describing how existing street assessments on South Minnesota Street will be split between the new lots. Then two motions are provided, one to approve and one to deny the request. I might note that also in previous conversations with Mr. Sabatino that he indicated that there was a potential that there could be some changes to the plotted areas between now and the final plat, and I said, you know, that's fine, that's, we can accommodate that.
Normal.
Yeah, well, it's not normal, but there is that time period, there is that time period between the preliminary plat and the final plat when changes do take place.
Okay, what are your wishes?
I'd recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Ittinger addition with conditions.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second recommending the approval with the conditions. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Discuss parking requirements for the B3 General Business District.
Okay, I put this on the agenda, you know, as a result of some conversations we've had with people, you know, looking to maybe do some things in the downtown area. And I'm not looking for, you know, decisions tonight. I just kind of want to explain what our current regulations are, and then maybe at our next meeting, we can further discuss the issue. Right now, there are no parking requirements in the B3 zoning district. And the B3 zoning district consists of the downtown area, and then Walmart, Menards, Target, Cashwise, Runnings, they also are all in a B3 zoning district. But we require parking for those particular businesses as part of a development agreement. So that's why they provide park, actually, they know they need to provide parking as well. But in the downtown area, you know, there are no requirements. In the downtown area, we allow apartment dwellings as a conditional use. And so over the years, there have been requests made to this body and, that have gone on to the city council. As far as a parking policy in dealing with apartments in the downtown area, we have taken the position that no parking is required if the space was previously used as an apartment. So within the buildings downtown, we have apartments, some of them are occupied, some of them haven't been for time periods that we don't know. So we consider those, though, to be part of the overall structures, you know, in the downtown area. Now, if someone came along and says, "I want to convert office space on the second or third floor of those buildings," or if they wanted to convert space on the first floor, we would say, "Okay, you need to provide parking for those uses." And so what is, you know, and we've received requests like that. So we are now receiving interest by people in doing the type of development that would require, you know, parking. And so how do we accommodate that when we have buildings that basically span the entire area, you know, of that particular parcel? So there's no physical way for them to put parking on that parcel. And so I, I think we need to give some thought to if we're going to allow residential development or additional residential development in our downtown area, where are we going to park those people? How are we going to accommodate that, given the fact that in certain instances, there's no area to put any more cars? So that's kind of the question. And I think what staff probably will do is maybe talk to, you know, different city departments that work within the downtown area to see if they have some recommendations or thoughts. And then, you know, we'd be looking to the commission to consider this matter. If you don't want to take any action, that's up to you. You know, we're not saying you have to, we want you to do something, we're just saying that this is an, this could become more of an issue, and I think it'd be good to get in front of it rather than always be reacting to it.
When we did, when Bodie did the Thrifty Building, this issue came up, and did we, he solved that problem by leased parking.
Correct.
Right? So that would be one solution, would be leased parking either on city lots or other private lots.
Yeah, it's, you could require that they lease privately owned areas, which is what happened in the case of Mr. Bodie. I think there also was, I think it was his intent long-term to eventually have access to the basement of that building where there is, there's a ramp which would allow vehicles to park down there. Or try to work something out whereby the city would make spaces available for apartment use. Right now, the only time we, or, no, we also, we probably would lease space to someone that lives downtown in the current arrangement that we have, but we just don't have enough leased parking spaces. I mean, we, we have waiting lists for certain locations that are, that are pretty lengthy.
So what are you saying, you want to, you're going to bring some kind of a recommendation to our next meeting, or?
I think I'm maybe not going to bring a recommendation back, but I'll bring information back, but I also want you to give it some thought as to solutions that you see, and then maybe we should have a discussion and come up with some recommendations.
Item five, receive report from city council decisions concerning the planning commission.
At the city council's August 7th meeting, there was a public hearing on the submittal of an application to, it's the Department of Employment and Economic Development, that's a state of Minnesota department, for financial assistance to assist windings with their relocation and the improvements to the building. I think you probably are aware that they are looking at the former LK building. And so they were seeking assistance through the Minnesota Investment Fund, which is a program that the city most recently utilized for the Kraft project, and then through the Job Creation Fund, which is a program that we've never utilized before. They approved the variance for the, requested by the New Elm School Limited Partnership, allowing a reduction in the number of required off-street parking spaces from 83 to 74. I might note that that project has a new name, it's now called Emerson Union. I might also note that we've been advised that after their first meeting with the State Historical Society, that the number of units in the building was recommended to be reduced from 55 to 49, in order to preserve a certain space within the building for community use. And then they also, State Historical Society said that the front building line of the building should not have, that would be on the State Street side of the building, should not have any new improvements made to that area. And so as a result, a parking lot that was proposed for that area has to be scaled back. It turns out that the reduction in the number of units helps deal with that parking issue. So they were reviewing that issue. On a different matter, the city has sold bonds for infrastructure improvements and for the renew projects. It was 2.5 million for the infrastructure and 7 million for the renew projects. At the August 21st meeting, they received a recommendation from the Safety Council to proceed with the construction of a mini roundabout on North Highland Avenue at both Oak and Center Street. So on Oak Street, that's right in front of the public high school, and on Center Street, you know, it's by the MLC campus.
What makes it a mini?
A mini is, I think, one where the...
I haven't got an answer to that.
You haven't got one yet either?
Where the, the circle is much more condensed. And I think you pretty much can do it within the confines of the existing paved area, so it doesn't require, you know, intruding into the adjoining residential areas, which there's two residential lots on the Oak Street side, three on the Center Street. But it does allow the, you know, the attributes of having a roundabout where your traffic is moving more continuously rather than dealing with a stop condition. So, and I think the council was most interested in proceeding with the Oak Street intersection. At that same meeting, they received a recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission to establish a park for Upper Cottonwood Street, and that was requested by the Dakota West Residence, that's a subdivision there, and that was referred to staff for some recommendation and options that might exist there. And then finally, at that meeting, the city manager submitted a separation, separation agreement for council consideration, and I guess if the agreement were to be accepted by the city council, he would resign effective December 31st of this year. That's it.
Okay, anything from the heritage?
We had two design reviews for signs come in front of us for Mr. Bodie's building on Center Street for the insurance office and the church, and for Kemsky River Bend building on North Minnesota, doing some canopies and signs and opening up the windows up on, above the, on the second floor is also proposed. And the Herman condition assessment is ongoing yet. The assessment team is going to have to come back down and do another, another site view here of Herman, so they've asked for a continuation of, milestone number three was supposed to be, is to be submitted September 1st. It's been extended to December 1st, and they're looking for a meeting with SHPO to get some recommendations on how proceed with the remediation of the monument. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the commissioners? If not, no further business, meeting adjourned.